Good evening, members of council.
Wait one second. There we go. All right.
Good evening, members of council. It's my pleasure this evening to bring Vaughn Renner from VHBN Landmark to the work session this evening. Her company was commissioned last year to do a land use study on Big Woods with connectivity to the retail corridor. And Vaughn comes here this evening to provide that presentation. So Vaughn, I'd ask you to come forward.
Well, good evening, and thank you for all of your participation in this. This has been a very interesting process and has, in some ways, come up with some surprises, I think, where we might have thought we'd be when we started. So it's been, it's been very instructive. Can you hear me all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me check if I can talk into the microphone. So what I'm going to do is I've run through just a brief PowerPoint I put together with some information that kind of summarizes some of the most important points and also the things that we can just refer to as we discuss it because I definitely want to be, want this to be as interactive and for you to ask as many questions as, as you want. So I'm going to run through this and then you'll know what we have here that we can go back and look at in more detail. All right, so let's see. So what, the work we're doing right now is we did the study for the IDA at that time, now the EDA, in 2004 to create a division plan for Big Woods. And so what we've done is we've come back and the city asked us, the EDA asked us, to update that study and bring it up to date and also to develop more implementation strategies. That didn't really, it wasn't a real implementation document. It was more just a master plan and it, but it was a very intensive economic study at the time. That was the, you know, half of it at least was about the economics. And then we just were using what we were finding in the economics and the conditions of the site to work up a new plan that could be used as guidance. So what, what we did this time is really try to come up with some strategies and some implementation initiatives in addition to updating the plan itself. And we did a brief market update. Thomas Point Associates worked with us. And this was a really interactive process and we're pleased that we really believe that stakeholders really all came to the table and gave, gave us a lot of information and opinions we were able to build on. And that includes you and the, and Planning Commission and the EDA and a lot of people from the business community that we hadn't really heard too much from before. So I think we really got a lot of input and a lot of real detailed things that are from people that know how all these things work in economic development. We also advertised it a lot to the public. I mean, even though we didn't get a big turnout in the general public meeting, we did have a lot of invitation, a lot of information out there so that people could attend it. The study area, again, we were looking at two things, the Big Woods and then the last time we didn't really look at the With Road Corridor, but we did this time. What's this? With Creek Corridor. With Road Corridor. But this time we looked at that, too. That was part of our assignment. So this kind of outlines the area. We sort of set aside the Big Woods, which has been something that's been on the economic development forefront and in front of everybody for quite a while with limited success, although what has been built there is very nice. And we took the With Creek Corridor right next to it, With Creek Road. So the primary focus of this was to kind of realign development expectations to this time and place because we've got a lot of environmental information that came up since it was last studied and certainly even more that had come up since this was first set aside as land, the Big Woods, to really be an economic development focus for technology, industry, and office. And of course, there've been the changes we've all seen in the economy, which we see a slow recovery, but it's going to be kind of what we call a new normal. I think we'll talk about a new normal and we're all trying to understand just what that is. And we probably won't understand until we get there completely. So, so what we've got is we created the draft or final report that you have in front of you tonight, although we certainly could consider adjustments if you see any that you want to have in terms of our feedback tonight. And what we've set forward is a primary goal for economic development along with objectives, some simple objectives. And a key thing that we did was we came up with guiding principles for economic development. And what these are are sort of guidelines based upon all the input we received of what the city wants that are, are put together in a way that you can kind of evaluate everything that happens and all the work that you do in economic development. You can evaluate it against these guiding principles. And then we did the market update, which I'll tell you a little bit about, and the vision plans and strategies. And I kind of wanted to take this primary goal statement and broke it into a few pieces just to elaborate a little on it. So it's, it reads like on the top, "Pecosin supports economic development." And that was the first question we brought to everybody was, "Do you want economic development in Pecosin?" And I think we heard pretty loud and clear, yes, we do want more business tax base in Pecosin, and we also want more business and services for people that live here. So that was a resounding yes, and in accordance with the guiding principles for economic development. And what, the, the purpose of these is to make sure you get the kind of quality and the kind of businesses you want so that they're really compatible with the community, which everybody really loves and wants the character, and nobody wants to see that change. We're trying to increase non-residential tax revenue. That's a big thing we talked about from the beginning. We'd like to see a decrease in residential taxes at some point. We also want to support the existing businesses. We don't want to do anything that detracts from them and detracts from what we have in actually a fairly healthy economy in the city compared to a lot of the areas around here. But we do want to attract the new businesses. And then the key thing is to maintain the high quality of life and possibly improve it some, but definitely at least maintain what everybody likes about Pecosin because of all the living here. Then the interesting thing, and I think this is the interesting thing that came through in a much stronger kind of statement context than I had thought it would at the beginning, which is the primary objective is to improve the public environment, to create a visitor destination, and enhance the quality of life for Pecosin citizens. So it really does come to kind of a physical improvement as a big component of the economic development for two reasons. One is it's been recognized that in order to have visitors, in order to build more business, you need to have the visitors in order to have more business for the locals, basically, because you've got to draw from a larger market area. And one of the things that'll bring visitors here will be to create a more pedestrian, lively environment that, that draws them. And also that having that very environment increases quality of life for Pecosin, gives them, gives you all something else you want. So that's how it laid out. I threw in this community vision. This isn't actually written exactly like this in the report, but I wanted to pull this forward because it's something that we, sort of a consolidation of a lot of things that were talked about that we came up with during the process. And one of them is to maintain and enhance the basic qualities of Pecosin. So I think that's one thing people are visualizing. And then the other one is to really look at water-related activities, to think about water-related activities and the waterman industry and the heritage as, as a kind of a fundamental theme of the kinds of businesses that'd be particularly appropriate to bring to this area. And at the same time, take advantage of and protect the natural resources. And we all have even more challenges coming in terms of protecting water quality and a lot of the things that Pecosin has already been dealing with and other people are going to have to, other communities will have to deal with, with ocean rise and flooding and becoming more extreme. And these three words, these are words, descriptive words, or what were repeated over and over. They want whatever business comes to be quiet, to be relatively small, and to be very high quality. So that kind of pushes a few things aside as you look at the future. So then we have three secondary objectives that we set up. And one of them is promoting regional cooperation and branding Pecosin within that region as something unique. You are unique. And so finding a way to brand that and to kind of take that out in the larger community and become much more visible is one objective. We still want to continue to market Big Woods with sites available, so we really have to make sure they really are available and which ones really should be marketed and what kinds of uses over the sequence. But that, that's definitely something that should continue. But I think the important line here is the development needs to be appropriate to the character and vision of the community. And that kind of circles back to the guiding principles again. The other thing is that we managed to bring together a lot of business people that really haven't gotten together a lot face-to-face and discussed things. And that really should, the, the city should really look for a way to continue to do that, to start to create some kind of forum, organization, and really be very active in trying to bring all those people together and consolidate their ideas. Because in order to really enrich things, in order to have all these things happen, you really need the support of the business community and you need to be sensitive to what, you know, what their needs and desires and plans are and also to be, help be able to instill some other ideas they might not be thinking of. And I know with any of the economic development that we've worked with in any community, whatever size, having support and having involvement of the business leaders in the community is very important. So figuring out a good way to do that is critical. Now, I've put the, I put all the guiding principles on a couple of slides here. I'm not going to just read through all those to you, but I thought they might be good reference when you have questions that we want to go back and look at them. But the one I liked in the top recommendation that people sent, just kind of like throwing their arms at us, implement the comprehensive plan. We have a great comprehensive plan. And that's what we need to do for economic development, is just really implement all of it. And I really thought this statement about the sustainable community that's in the comprehensive plan was really appropriate to exactly what we're saying. The financial stability, retention of citizen disposable income, attraction of outside investment and spending, better circulation for mobility, improved transportation, enhanced recreation and amenities, increased quantity and quality in commercial goods and services, and low tax rates. Those are exactly all the priorities that came out again through this. So I think that shows you did a really good job with the comprehensive plan and there's a lot of consistency going on, which really is very helpful in terms of having the energy and resources to move forward. So congratulate you on that. So we set up a number of guiding principles and I said that I'm not going to go through all those right now because I know you've had the report in front of you and you've been able to look at that. But I thought we might want to come back to some of these specifics. But I'm just going to tell you a little bit about how some of these get reflected in what we've shown on the plans. And then, you know, they're here and we can come back to them on the slide for the discussion. Now the, I'm going to give a brief overview here for the Pecosin market area, but the whole study that Thomas Point Associates prepared as the update is included as an appendix to the report, even though I've just summarized it in it. But I think one of the things that, that Thomas Point Associates did is say, "How is it different than it was 2003?" The report came out in 2004, but the economic work was done in 2003. And there's really some very interesting things. The, the population is older, but even more affluent. And so it's a very affluent population they found, we found before, and it's even greater now, that there's really even more disposable income available among the citizens in the community. There has been more retail and office that's developed in the areas around Pecosin, as we know, but the retail gap has actually increased. There's really more demand for additional retail in the market area than there was seven years ago. So I think that's really important. And of course, the last one's obvious, that the recession has changed the development environment. And so he lays out quite a bit of demographics in his report, but the ones that I thought, that I just wanted to emphasize and that he wanted to emphasize are that you've had this real increase, it's a substantial increase in household income. So it's well above inflation or any of the others. So it's 50% higher than in the region. And I've got, I put a phrase in here and I called it the market area of Pecosin, which is that three-mile circle. I guess I didn't explain that on the first map, that Thomas Point Associates had set up and saying that that's the market that really feeds into Pecosin. So it's three miles around City Hall. And you're, so that has, you know, your household income is just so much higher than the other communities around it, has grown faster, and your population is growing. So based on that, that there's so much unmet demand in the retail that when people are able to get funds, and it's been a problem getting the funding and the banking and the financing, as we all know, to actually move forward on a lot of plans. But as that becomes more available, we really expect that the retail will really pick up and that's a real, going to be a real opportunity. But also, it was really reassuring that, that your vacancy rate is about half of what it is in the peninsula as a whole. So Pecosin has been able to stay very steady through the recession compared to other communities, too, which is, and your lease rate is about the same as on the rest of the peninsula. Office is a little more unique because there has been real increase in vacancy rate. So on the market as a whole, there's a real surplus of office space available. However, the one group that pretty steadily is looking for office space are the government contractors. So there's kind of a steady demand for that. And as there have actually been other military groups that are consolidating into this area and other kinds of activities. Langley keeps improving its facilities and adding things. I know people have been concerned about the joint forces in Suffolk leaving and what does that mean? We're losing a lot of the military. But the fact of the matter is that already the population to go back into that building, which was 5,000 that were leaving, I guess, is greater than the number that were employed there before. There's so much demand for that kind of high-tech space in the market and all that kind of communications. So it just filled right up that huge building. So, so the geographic location that Pecosin has relative to Langley in particular is very important and just really need to focus on what are the things that are needed there because around virtually every base, there are different kinds of contractors moving in. Thomas Point still thinks there is potential for a sort of a mixed-use center at Big Woods, but it needs to be a very small-scale mixed use. So one of the things that emerged and that particularly a lot of the business people talked about is that you really need to be realistic about the size of your market. And drawing in a big grocery store is not something that's likely to happen in terms of these specialty grocery stores that, that people are wanting to see more. But having other kinds of smaller sort of specialty businesses mixed in these mixed use is a very good potential. And actually, some of those kinds of uses are some of the things that draw people in terms of activating the public space. But the key, key thing that I wanted to emphasize and was emphasized over and over, we don't want new business that will compete with what we have here. We want our businesses to stay healthy, so we want other things that complement it and enrich the environment. And yeah, I guess the only other thing that I wanted to mention that we talked quite a bit about is that there still is really looking at a possibility of some kind of lodging as being part of the Big Woods development is certainly a good potential. There's a lot more of sort of suite housing and in a lot of areas, there's sort of combination complexes where you might do like retail or offices on the first floor and the other floors would actually be suite hotel. So you start to have kind of whole different categories of where people stay. And being this close to Langley, that kind of development is a really good possibility and might be the kind of mixed use more than full-time residential for Big Woods. So it's certainly something to think about. And Big Woods is really well-adapted to startup and incubator businesses, so, and smaller government contractors. So there's a really key market there that would fit in here real well, and this is a kind of community that, that people would really like to come into. And of course, we heard throughout that we really would like to have more medical facilities here, wellness centers, health-related recreation and business and things like that. So those are all the kinds of things that'll fit very well in the land and space you have and the sizes. And again, on the retail, just be realistic. There were a few things that were specifically mentioned over and over, which were the high-quality restaurants and particularly seafood, but it certainly is a, a city that it kind of doesn't make sense. Everybody leaves to go eat and you really could support some really good restaurants that would bring people here instead. So finding a way to do that. And then the fishing and touring and, and local goods and crafts and maybe even startup industry. We see in communities that, that have parcels, the kind of size you do and they kind of set up, they've really seen a lot of sort of cottage industries where they can make things. A lot of will be craft-related, but not necessarily. Some of it's going to be high-tech related. And sell it and sort of have a combination retail, light industrial warehouse complex at a small scale. And that would work very well at Big Woods. So we developed a concept plan and I think the important thing is that so much discussion came out of the meetings about With Creek Road, that that has to be just as big a focus as the Big Woods for, for your economic development. People want to look at infill, they want to look at how to strengthen that, and they want to see it all connected together. And it makes a lot of sense to connect it together because here in Big Woods, you have this facility, which is a, a community center. You've got your library and, and it's really designed, it's already designed to have outdoor active space and things. So instead of just thinking about how do you develop right around this building, really focusing on how you connect this complex to With Creek Road and start to have it be part of, of what is already happening in the city is something that needs to happen. Walkability came up over and over as being really important. And then a high priority is to really enhance the corner of With Creek Road and Victory Boulevard and start to create a gateway and sort of a community center. And of course, you have your new park going in there. And so it really lends itself to that very well. So we have this plan and the purpose of it is to provide initial concept guidance and to be able to use it for marketing and, and showing parcels and potential development to businesses. So you have a tool there. Now, in Big Woods, the kind of land uses, we still stayed focused on doing something fairly concentrated around the circle in front of the, the City Hall and Library here, that that would be good to have some buildings close there to really create that space as someplace where people like to be. So if you're able to get coffee shops or anything that would have places for people to be outdoors and everything. But one of the things that was pretty clear is that we don't really want to, we want to have Pecosin-style buildings. And we really have a very good building, the office building that was built at the corner of City Hall. And Victory is very attractive. And so it's, it's a really good example of a building that gives you some frontage on the street, but also gives you that good visibility that's that little more of the style that exists in the business, businesses in Pecosin. The north side is the, is the area now that's been cleared. The clue is to get the utilities to it and get access to it so that you actually have something that really is development-ready. That's what's really important, to be able to market that site now. So it's going to take some investment to do that. But unless you're going to find one developer that'll do the whole thing, which is a possibility, it's going to be essential. And even for that use, it would be good because you have one place you want that entrance to be. And, and that's right there opposite City Hall Avenue. So we have stayed with the real traditional development form on the north side and brought the buildings closer to Victory. And that's because the rideaway for Victory is so huge that if you went on that site, you put in parking spaces in front and then you put the buildings in back, they're going to be so far back, they won't start to create a gateway and they won't really have visibility from the road. So that's one place where I think that kind, and what it does, it allows you to have a good frontage in the fronts of the businesses, but you actually can have things like some loading area or light industrial or any number of things that go on behind the buildings if they're developed individually or as a whole. So, and even if it's developed individually, if you do decide to parcel them off, you're going to have to have ingress egress easements and use easements because you really want to have one entrance or at the most two later if there's a good place to connect. With Creek Road, it really needs to be that kind of main street. You already have a lot of good businesses. The biggest problem with it is that the road itself is really wide and has a lot of traffic, so it's kind of hard to negotiate. It's hard to go from one side to the other if you're pedestrian. So it's really not pedestrian-friendly. And so that's one of the main things that came out that really needs to be a goal, is how, how do we create that? And how can we go about creating that kind of experience? And then really looking for opportunities to infill because there's really some, a lot of underutilized parcels stuck in there and you really want to kind of create a vibrancy where you have things going all the way along. So helping the landowners and the businesses in some ways to develop that would be really good. So, so looking for those opportunities and for the economic development department in the city to actively market that just as actively as they do Big Woods is, is really important. You need to do a lot of things at once to be successful in economic development. Then connectivity is the other big thing we looked at since that was what came up in terms of the walkability and experience. And so we've outlined just the beginnings of where you really want to have pedestrian activity. And this is some of our, our, you know, critical first steps are some of these. And just to point out what this is doing, if my line will work. Here's an example, that you can stay with this same kind of form of a shopping center with your parking lots in front if you'll get some buildings, like you can add buildings, some buildings that come down to the street that start to give you the pedestrian route through the parking. And you also can do that just by developing it in the parking lot as long as you have a really defined, attractive space. So being able to have a way for pedestrians to feel welcome to go into those buildings to come back out to the street, that's the kind of connectivity you're looking for. And that's something that the businesses, I think, will understand so you don't drive from one thing to another all the time. Now, we had, the city has the benefit of, of two very good studies and this was brought up to us. We hadn't had them until in the process, that's what someone said in one of the meetings is, "Well, you've got these, these studies. Kublin, Kublin's Transportation Group did these studies." You know, so we have good studies. We really need to implement them. So we really pulled these in because I think they are excellent beginning studies. They involved a lot of interaction. They worked with VDOT standards and, and just a lot of things that are the things you have to know. And in fact, one of our main recommendations is make sure you have all of the, you really take advantage of all the work that gets done for you and you have it available and look at it all the time. Because I noticed in one, one of these that was done in 2005, the With Creek Work Sessions, one of the recommendations is to get a market study done when we'd just done that huge intensive market study two, two years before. So that's, that's a job that needs to be part of the economic development and planning together is every report that's done, make sure you're considering it every time you do the others. So we incorporated these very strongly in this report and we reference it. We don't have any actual images from it in the report, but, but all of the streetscape, virtually all of the streetscape that we show and the pedestrian connectivity actually ties in with the concepts that were set forward in that plan. So I think you have that in front of you. We've updated some things about costs and, because costs always change and you never know. But, but basically to be able to take With Creek Road where you've got that four-lane section, then you've got a turn lane in the middle and, and instead make it, put a median in there. And there can be, but, but this report recommends is that there's some sort of first-level fix that are relatively inexpensive where you don't put in the new curb and everything, but you just get colored pavement or something that identifies it. And then you start adding green space where you can. And the key, one of the key reasons this is great, these pedestrian rest areas, so it's very easy and inviting for people to cross the street. So those reports are shown on the concept plan basically and are things that we really recommend and look at how to implement them. Now, there are two intersections that we came up with that are very high priority. And one of them is the Victory Boulevard and With Creek Road. That intersection really can be a gateway. You can slow down the traffic. You can start to establish a lot more pedestrian-friendly environment there. And it's an opportunity area that's not real expensive to accomplish some of that. Probably the only caution is that as you, as you're looking at the dollars and the costs and trying to figure out how to do these things is that when you do special pavements in the VDOT roadway, the, the city will need to maintain that. They'll allow you to do these things, but you have to maintain them. So that's the maintenance and operations are something that need to be considered as well as any initial cost. The other one is that we went with the recommendation of the Kublins. The other one is that we went with the recommendation of the Kublins Group on the Victory because we think it would be a very good solution to put a roundabout at City Hall. So basically what you would have is your access to the north side of Big Woods and one side of it. You'd have City Hall Avenue on the south. And you would start to have a thing that starts to create a gateway, an identity that can tie right into what would happen at Victory and With Creek. And so, but it may not be, these are fairly, this is an expensive item. So this isn't something, and it's true, some of that work in With Creek too, those are expensive items. But one of the things you want to do with these plans is you want to say, this is how we want it. So you go to the other agencies and other people that are doing things and say, but this is how we want it. So for example, the, the With Creek Road, which I think is funded now, to extend it through Hampton and that section that is not up four lanes to do that, but, but it'd be good for the city to pressure them to do a median and start to establish the section that you want on the road now. Because those are the kinds of things you can influence. And we found that VDOT is being a lot more sensitive to what the communities want if they give them a pretty strong message about it. So that's, that's something well worth looking at. And the same thing with this roundabout, if that just gets in the plans, nothing's funded as far as I've been able to know on Victory right now, it's just sitting there. But we're all seeing that what's happening with the dollars and the transportation and the VDOT and everything. You never know when one thing will come up. Once everything's widened up With Creek, if you're looking at that as an important secondary access to Langley, then you need to get the improvements to Victory. So they, you know, they might start to become something of a priority. So you just need to be prepared to make what you want known. Now, in terms of the site design, I think I've, I've pretty much kind of covered this idea of getting the connectivity and trying to bring some things out to the street, but going ahead and keeping the parking. Because that was a very strong statement, that Pecosin isn't a town that wants the traditional city buildings right on the street all the way. So it's just a matter of, of adapting that and doing something in between. And then modifications of various kinds like that on, on Big Woods. Big Woods, I think in terms of the opportunity with the key, one of the key things is you've got, the land is very broken up, there's a lot of different owners. So it's going, that's one of the reasons, I think, that a lot of things, you know, that things haven't happened there as fast as everybody was hoping. And so being able to be prepared to come in with different kinds of things and evaluate them and being very flexible is going to be important, and that's where the, the guiding principles come in. So in the implementation, the first, the first thing we just have to say is, you really can't do a really ambitious or even slightly ambitious economic development initiative without having a staff person. You've got to have more staff dedicated to it. You need one person, at least their primary job and probably most of their job at least is doing economic development. You have a, you have a lot of very versatile, good people that work on your city staff. And so there's a lot of ways people can find to share work and share abilities, but right now you need more than you've got. You need another person. And you can't really undertake this in the form we put before. There's some things you could do, but you can't undertake this plan without adding staff. So I think, I think your staff is doing as well as they can, all things considered. But if you want more, you're going to have to, to do that and invest in it. And then what we basically do is the first couple of years, we set aside a near, an immediate, which is two years. And that's kind of putting all this stuff in place, establishing the framework, the branding, working with the business community, developing some structures, starting to look at partnering, figuring out ways you might start looking at funding and doing grant research and different things. Defining the metrics and getting all the baseline for your measurements of success. Looking at your zoning issues to make sure you have things zoned so that you could actually, people could come right in and do these without having to go through rezoning. You want to get it so it's not going to be a rezoning, it's going to be some kind of a site plan approval. So there are a lot of different tools you can use, and we've laid a bunch of those out in the report. But the thing to remember is economic development requires investment. So there's investment of all different kinds. There's energy, there's time, there's dollars. And you really have to develop the commitment and then really look at, at the tools you have if you really want to move forward. Then, then what we did was laid out a near term, we called it one to five years. So some of these things could happen simultaneously, the one to two years. Because one thing, for example, is you want to keep marketing like you've got. I mean, it's not like you're going to ever stop marketing Big Woods or you're starting to look at, does he come up with any possible development parcels or things that people want to do, helping to really market that? But, but also the next thing that follows on is to get much more detailed kind of district guidelines, specific guidelines on what you want or anything that, that you can point to and say, if you do it this way, no problem, it'll prove you very quickly. So you can really facilitate it. Because even more than ever before, the time it takes for people to develop is money. So it, it means a lot to them. And then we did, we have a couple of priority, two priority projects. We said the first one is to get some kind of pedestrian or pedestrian and bicycle, if you could, connection between, between City Hall and With Creek. So that's the number one priority in terms of actual physical projects. And the, and the second priority would be enhancing that intersection. So they're, in the scheme of things, relatively low cost, but they still are man, we've laid out dollars, you know, they're, they're wide range because you never know what anything's going to cost. You know, one minute we bid something and it comes in at half of what the bids come in half, and then we bid something that are twice. So it's really hard to anticipate it. And then the rest of it is really five to 20 years. It's, it's a long plan. You know, this is a commitment that you, if you want to do it, you make the commitment. And then it takes a lot of patience for it all to get there, but small steps do add up. So what, we said, well, what are the measurements of success? And what, and what we're saying is, look at the thing, information you already get and what you can glean from that and establish a baseline and then track those things. So we know that we want the increased revenue from business taxes and, and increased real estate value that can happen as more businesses come in. You've got to have that offsetting the public costs at the very least as you move on to know that you're going to get payback on any investment that you make in the improvements. The number of business licenses, the gross receipts per square foot, that's not readily, it's not available now, but it would pretty, pretty readily accessible, it'd be pretty easy to do. So you're kind of looking for that low-hanging fruit to, to evaluate it. Because otherwise your evaluation and measuring the success can be so expensive in itself that, you know, that it bogs the whole thing down. So local employment, increased employment, increased customers, if you've found ways to track that. And just if there really are more products and services. And then the other things are, those things we all want to increase, but we really do want the taxes to level, residential taxes to level off and decrease. We want a more attractive and safe public realm. We want a bicycle and pedestrian network and a greater range of services. So I took longer than I intended to go through that, and you're already, but do you have any particular questions or comments or things you would like to go over?
On your market update, you have one of your bullets, it says unmet MAP demand increased, and you got up to four, 461 million. How'd you, well, first of all, exactly what does that number mean? And secondly, how did you calculate that?
Oh, it's, you're out of the plan, so I'm sure I know what, which one you're talking about. What, the, the market information is research that the economists can, can get from, there's census data, and then there's a lot of data that comes out about economics. And so you're asking about which one?
It says unmet MAP demand increased from 315 million to 461 million. I just want to know basically what that meant. Is that like, that's how much money residents have to spend or?
Right. How that's basically looking at is expendable income, you know, extra income that people have to spend in the area. So that's where you're looking at, a lot of it is happening from just increased dollars per household is a big contributor to that.
I just wasn't sure what the, what the term is.
People outside of Pecosin, it's within those circles.
Right, looking at the three, in other words, all of these numbers, as you look at them all in your report, they, all of them are done for Pecosin and they're done for that three-mile market area of Pecosin. And then they're done for, sometimes it's MSA and sometimes the peninsula region, so.
I had, are you done, Carrie?
Uh, yes.
I had a question about the, this is the first I've, I've heard of, of maybe putting a roundabout out here, which I think might be a good answer. One of the things we've been concerned about in the past was putting a, if we put a stoplight there, it would prevent people from coming down, or stopping there and not using the With Creek.
Right.
I like, I like to use the term, it puts people at a competitive disadvantage.
Yes. Yeah, that's right. And in fact, all of, all of that was studied really well. So it'd be good probably to ask for a copy of this report to be distributed. We've, we've scanned it, so I think we've given it to the, to Dave electronically, and if we haven't, we'll send it to him.
So I guess my question is, the roundabout, you think would level the playing field a little bit?
Yeah, it would slow down traffic. It, it avoid, makes, allows you to avoid anything about a signalization, which you really don't want to have to be putting in a traffic signal there. And, but instead it slows down the traffic, it creates that gateway. So it's possible to start to have that pedestrian movement across it. The most challenging issue to address is the bicycles. So that's something that would need to be considered in the design. But they're, they're fairly expensive. Now, what I did in the report is we put in the dollars that VDOT uses for their projections that they're going to put in a roundabout. And so it may be that this one is actually not going to be at the very high level of cost that is, because there's about one and a half, two million dollar range that you can have in these. So that's, that's where you get to the design. One of the things we've recommended is getting into this design, if possible, in the five-year period so you've got them on the shelf and you understand and you can really get good costs.
A lot of things in your report seem to be contrary to what, you know, the city's experiencing with other, other activities going on. One is your emphasis on a sidewalk between City Hall Avenue and With Creek Road where our sidewalk committee is concentrating on Pecosin Avenue and having a sidewalk put in there. The second thing is, you said, like, support existing businesses. And here we have a Wendy's that is trying to come to town, which will be in competition against other, you know, fast food restaurants or pizza places or whatever. You mentioned With Creek Road is too wide, that it should be narrowed. And yet, you know, here we are looking at a widening plan to, you know, to bring down to the other end, heading into Hampton. And I guess the fourth thing, you talk about that our number one need is a position, a full-time position for an economic development person. And I don't think we have that in this year's budget, do we?
No, sir.
I mean, we're kind of at a, at a crossroads between your report and other activities that are going on, you know, within other areas of the city. So I mean, I'm at a loss, where do we, you know, where do we go or what do we do?
I think, just to answer like those three or something. The, the initiatives, as I understand them, and I, for the sidewalk committee, have dealt a lot with some places that they want people to be able to walk for the, for the community as a whole and not have as much to do with this economic development initiative of connecting your parts of the city into one whole. So that might be why you end up with a different priority. And it also might be because that's something where you have some people that are particularly interested in that piece of sidewalk for some reason or something. So I don't know if that committee has actually been assigned to figure out what are the priorities for the whole city of where the sidewalk should go. But this would be something for them to think about because we certainly wanted that.
And your other options were Huggins Road and Little Florida to get to the heart of the city and not so much, you know, not so much.
Right, and that's good too. I mean, they're all important, you know? So, you know, the exact order of anything that happens. But in terms of the improvements that we looked at for economic development of physical improvements, we thought that was one that needed to happen. Now, on the With Creek Road, that's, that's challenging because, because the VDOT studies and everything show that it needs to be wider. I don't know how much they've really looked at the overall patterns because the interesting thing about Pecosin is that you're kind of at an end. So the only part that, you know, you're connected through is to come up With Creek and then over on Victory is, is the major route. And I think that's what they're looking at in the overall transportation plans. And that's why I said Victory might turn around and widening come faster than you might think too. Because that's a really good alternate way for people to go up the peninsula from Langley and not get caught up in all that other traffic if you go and some of the other routes. So maybe it's a transition that happens ultimately at Victory and maybe north of Victory, someday you'll want to narrow that. But our main recommendation at the beginning is, it just would be good to create a median with turn lanes where you really needed them in the median. And to start to look at ways to combine access on the side parcels. Because that's the trouble with the median is, if you've got all these entrances to all these parking lots, then you have too many places that people are trying to cross it. So that's why it really needs to be something to really work out with the community and the business community working together. But ideally, you'd have less ingress and egress onto Victory and more that people could circulate from business to business. You almost have an alternate parallel route. And that's, you know, that can work with parking lots and ingress egress easements and things and allow you to do that. So it seemed, particularly as you go on that other section, the, the section to the south and on through Hampton, being able to have a median is a very good possibility because you don't have as many curb cuts. You don't have all the curb cuts you have, you know, in downtown Pecosin. So that's, right now, we're not recommending narrowing immediately to two lanes, it'd still be four lanes, but that just having a median and then very controlled points that you do the turns will really help that road and it'll help the appearance and it'll help the pedestrians. So, and what was the third one?
Just the, the businesses, you're saying, you know, support the existing businesses and not bring in other businesses that compete.
And that's an interesting thing to think about relative to restaurants. Because a lot of times, having more of them generates more business and doesn't end up creating competition. Because a place that has a lot of places to eat and things like that draws more people. Whereas people only have one alternative or two alternatives, then they don't come there as often. So that'd be something to really, to study before you think of it as a conflict. Because I think in the restaurant arena, that can be a help, not a hindrance to growth.
One other question. When you showed the roundabout up there, I interpreted that to be as two lanes going each way, so it's actually a two-lane roundabout, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it'd need to be.
Okay, so that, that will, that'll slow traffic down but not really be a strong impediment.
Yeah, and in terms of the VDOT cost projections that we put on that, that's what they were based on.
Well, there's some fundamental decisions. I guess, is it, you got one more question?
Well, no, it was not a question, it was just more of a comment for our city council that I think fairly soon, we need to decide how much development we want, tell the manager and fund him and staff him. Because I don't think we've done that. And I think he's trying to do absolutely all he can with, with very little and very little decision from us or direction from us. I just think we need to decide that and, and, you know, proceed on with it.
No, I, I think these are very good comments. And Frank, your, your points are well taken, at least from, from my perspective. I guess what I would encourage the council to do here is, we're, we're kind of the point where we hear it all. We hear the sidewalk committee tell us what their priorities are. We hear VDOT come in and tell us what their priorities are. We hear Van Renner and, and Dave come in and tell us what would be best for the city. And we're kind of the, we get to hear it all and we've got to kind of digest it and put it out in a logical sequence of, how does that change our priorities? And are we comfortable enough to add this plan to the comprehensive plan? You know, because it's not going to be followed in detail. It's going to be more of, this is a nice guide. And there will be discussions about whether the roundabout is the right thing on Victory Boulevard or it's a, or it's a stoplight. We've already had some of those discussions when we first had a grocer come in about putting other businesses at a competitive disadvantage. If we can find another way to do that, those are the types of things. But I would just encourage us to kind of think, and I guess Randy, from your perspective, I heard a couple steps, steps one and two, which were basically to, to kind of lay out a, a plan and let us know what it would take. And if we have to staff something, kind of to go along with what Carrie had suggested, you know, what would that look like? Would that look like a full-time person? Would that look like something that you get a young kid out of college or marketing, somebody who does it on the side, a Realtor, somebody with a business background? What does that look like to the council, so?
Well, we are going, we're set to have a work session at your next meeting.
Well, we are going, we're set to have a work session at your next meeting where Dave and I are bringing forth sort of the strategic plan to move forward. So many of these issues will be addressed, the staffing issue will be addressed, and the types of options that you would look at. But I just, if I could respond to part of what you said, I think that if we're going to compete with the people we need to compete with, and I mean Hampton and Newport News and York County, all of them have robust economic development departments, and I'm not sure we can do that with a part-timer who's just another duty as a side. I think we ought to, we need probably one person who has got the requisite skills, whose sole job is to advance the ball. Because I think in our city especially, because we wear so many hats, that it's so easy to take your eye off the ball because there's yet another ball coming at you. And I think, you know, Mr. Krieger's question about things that in his mind seem to be going in different directions all at once, part of that is because we don't have a central focus on how things should be coordinated. So I think it's, four different things happen all at once and they all look like they're different, just because there's no one whose job it is to sort of point out that they, where they diverge.
Would it be cheaper to hire like an outside firm to market, or is it cheaper to hire our own economic development person?
My sense would be if all they were doing was marketing, that probably a marketing firm would be the cheaper way to go. But I think we've got so much more to do. We've got the existing businesses piece, we've got zoning and.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
And I think that's the first thing that.
It was just, I didn't know, but you're right. It's got, it's more than just bringing in somebody, it's.
Well, Gene, you also mentioned the sidewalk committee, and it's been mentioned a couple of times here in the past few minutes, and to be fair, we really haven't finished with the sidewalk committee yet. There's a lot yet to be done there. So we don't really know what routes we would project that we're going to really follow at this point. So there's still a lot of work to be done there.
And to add to that, I would say that what I do know about the sidewalk committee, what they chose was, the reason they chose it was about connectivity. That's the one reason they picked from, you know, the location, it would connect the entire east end of town to With Creek.
And there's safe routes to school.
Yes.
Also.
And that feeds into this.
Anything else? If not?
Not for me.
Dave, do you want to speak? Say anything else? You're good? Okay, well, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Back. To Gene here, I messaged to Gene.